Oh, okay. Did you get what you needed? We have one minute. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Carolyn Vinson, who is with the High Point Christian Tabernacle on Old Concord. She'll come forward at this time and give our invocation and also lead us in the pledge of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Let us pray. O God, our help in ages past. We ask for your great blessing and guidance as the people's business is conducted this night. Let each issue be presented and stated with clarity and vision. Let every decision be made with wise consideration and counsel. We pray for our great nation, the city of Smyrna, Mayor Bacon, and all of the officials that make up this council. Let your continued blessing and favor be upon them all. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those folks that are looking for a new church or just new to town or want to change, I'm sure the folks at High Point Christian Tabernacle will love to have you. They're on Old Concord Road. There's always a big crowd there on Sunday. Thank you so much. Agenda changes, we've got a couple. Item 6B will be tabled once we get to it. And also 6C will be removed from the agenda as that is not ready for us to act on it. So those are only two changes. Under the mayor's report, we have a proclamation and recognition of the respect for firefighters. Mr. Fennel has got that, and I believe there's someone here. Betty Turley is here. And Betty, if you'll step forward, I'll get Ron to, you can read it here and then present that to her.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to read a proclamation by the mayor in the city of Smyrna, "Respect for Firefighters." Whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club believe that a firm commitment to the safety of the citizens of Smyrna and Cobb County is a fundamental responsibility, and whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club recognize that in addition to firefighting duties, fire department personnel provide emergency medical service, administering basic life support to help preserve life until more advancement treatment can be provided, and thereby significantly reducing deaths and disabling injuries. And whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club recognize that fire inspection duties performed by the fire department personnel are a powerful proactive measure which prevent a great amount of property damage, injury, and death year after year. And whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club annually recognize and honor the members of the Smyrna Fire Department and other public safety professionals who risk their lives to help safeguard the welfare and property of citizens and continue to support programs aimed at raising public awareness of the importance of fire safety. Now therefore, I, AMAX Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim October 11, 2013, as Respect for Firefighters Day, and ask all citizens of the Smyrna area to join the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club in expressing thanks to the members of the Smyrna Fire Department for their invaluable service they perform to the community. And witness whereof, I have here unto place set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed on the seventh day of October in the year of our Lord, 2013. AMAX Bacon, Mayor of Smyrna.
And Betty, if you'd like to say something, or I know you never had a loss for words.
No, not.
Thank you, Betty. I'll present this to you, and let's get a photograph while we're doing this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this. On behalf of the Smyrna Optimists, I proudly accept this proclamation and ask that all the citizens and everyone in Smyrna and the surrounding area join the Smyrna Optimists in showing our appreciation and respect to all the personnel of the Smyrna Fire Department, whether it be firefighters, medics, or anyone else in the department. And I want to invite all the mayor and council to come Friday morning to our breakfast where we honor the firemen and the personnel of the Smyrna Fire Department. I expect to see more people there than just Ron and Corky. Some of you others should show up 7:00 a.m. Friday morning at the American Legion Post. And we have a good breakfast, a good country breakfast, so I know you'll enjoy it. And thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, I believe Steve Ciaccio is here to recognize some future stars, third and seventh grade kids that won the national championship. I can tell which ones are the ballplayers because they're all up here, and the parents are over here, and the coaches are back here, so. Steve?
Yes, sir. Future and current stars, Mr. Mayor. The Eddie Lee Wilkins, ELW Future Stars, is a traveling basketball program for boys and girls in the third through 10th grade, with over 25 teams that play in competitive leagues throughout Georgia and surrounding states. The organization is conducted by Eddie Wilkins, former NBA player, a host of talented coaches, and Don Wilkins, league coordinator. The organization is based in the Smyrna community. They play out of the community center, and most of the players live in Smyrna. I'd like to introduce Eddie and his lovely bride, Don Wilkins, up to the microphone, and they'll introduce the stars. Eddie?
Thank you, Council, for having us here. And before I get started, I would like to thank Steve Ciaccio and the people at the Smyrna Community Center for helping us develop these young men, not only in basketball, also the Rangers as well, but socially and academically. We take academics very seriously with the Future Stars as well. And before I introduce the third grade team, I want to tell you a little bit about them. We had two teams. We have one of the largest organizations in Georgia, and we were the only one to have two national champions, the third grade and the seventh grade. And the third... The third grade team, they were WBOA national champions, and the event was in June 2013 in Kissimmee, Florida. The team is coached by Michael Roach and Lance James, and Adam Gibbs is the manager. The team had an explosive season, and they were undefeated the whole season. So, guys, when I call your name, if you'll stand up, you can be recognized. First, we have Corey Gibbs. Just stand up, stay standing. Cole Wilson. Joshua Reed. Carlton Lucas. Simeon Cottle. Hal Hansen. Malcolm Patterson. Nicholas Jacobson. And not here is Jordan Brewer.
If there are parents that would like to, parents that would like to come up to get a picture of their kids, y'all can come up here, so. I don't think anything will happen. Y'all can look this way, gonna take a picture that way. So, yeah, y'all can come up behind us. These are third graders?
These are third graders.
They're now in the fourth.
They're now in the fourth grade.
Man. Which one? For those folks that don't know, this is, y'all have a lot to do with not only this ELW, but also the other programs in Smyrna, and it's really great to see people to give back to their community through coaching these kids and running the league, because I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. So, look at Eddie Lee, he's done this before. He's looking camera one over there, camera two over there. Yeah, absolutely. All right, congratulations, guys.
Yes, and now we have our seventh grade team, and this is a team consisting of mostly the kids, the local area. A lot of the teams have people from everywhere, but we have local kids, and we've developed them, so we're very proud of them as well.
And a lot of them have been playing together since they were in the fourth grade.
Yes. And our slogan on the back is, "We started from the bottom, and now we're here. We made it to the championship." But the seventh grade, they were, this event took place in July in Kissimmee, Florida. The team was also number two in the AAU state. The number one team won the AAU as well. And the team is coached by me and Eugene Frye. And the team had an electrifying season, and I want to introduce these guys. First, we have Trey Dooms. Cameron Bennett. Dontavious Hall. Abdul Davis. Marcus Frye. Jalen Pugh. Evan Wilkins. Austin Johnson. Kurt Memms. Rudy Fitzgibbons. Marcellus Frazier. Nicholas Harris. And not here, Tarjay Ray and Ashton Hagens.
Now, these are seventh graders?
They are eighth graders now. They were seventh graders, they're eighth graders now.
A couple of them got the old box fade.
Yeah.
They look good. Or the eraser or something was what it's got.
And he just turned 14, and the other guy that's tall, he's only 13. So he'll be 14 in January.
Yeah. Well, thank y'all so much for representing the city and doing the things that y'all do and give back to our community, and we appreciate it. Eighth graders, huh? I'm still not even as tall as some of them.
Yes, sir.
I'm way past that.
Thank you all.
Thank y'all so much for what y'all do. Thank y'all. Thank you very much. And if you're a parent or a family friend, will you please stand up? I know y'all are awful proud with the parents and the family and friends. Man, that's everybody's back. Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all. Okay, item four on the agenda is land issues, homies, and annexations. We have none. Item five is previous licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. A's 2013-340. Final FY13 budget amendment. Mr. Taylor, will you please give us the background on that, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, guys and girls, and husbands and wives, and fathers and sisters, and coaches. Thank y'all.
Our fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th of every year, and at the end of this, each fiscal year, we are required by state law to do an audit. And we currently have had our auditors here looking at some of our financial records. And in order to close out the records, we have to make some final adjustments to the budget to account for various transactions that took place over the year. And so this is something that we do every year, and so we do recommend approval on this.
Ms. Taryn Nullwich, who is chairman of the Finance Administration?
Yes, thank you. This is something that we do every year, and I would like to invite Tony Joe Howard up, the city's finance director, to talk about this in a little bit more detail.
Yes, as Mr. Taylor said, this is something that we do every year. It's just the last step in completing the audit to make sure that the financial statements are presented correctly for that budget to actual statement. Did anyone have any questions specifically?
I do have one question. Is there any kind of surplus that we can tell the residents about?
Yes, it looks that we will have a surplus of about $1.2 million.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Nullwich.
At this time, I would like to then go ahead and move to approve the final fiscal year 13 budget amendment. This is item 6A, 2013-340.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of motion, please vote. That's approved, five to two, with Ms. Wilkinson and Mr. Lenico opposing. Item 6B, as I mentioned earlier, is the appealed decision of the License and Variance Board regarding variance requests. Allow temporary sign only on weekends at 2453 Cobb Parkway. De Geller. Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. De Geller and Sons have requested us to move this table to the 21st of October meeting, and I'll make a motion on V13-034 to appeal the decision of the License and Variance Board regarding variance requests. V13-034, allow temporary signs only on weekends, Saturday and Sunday. 10 acres, landlot 849, 2453 Cobb Parkway. De Geller and Sons to be tabled until October 21st.
Have motion, a second, and a table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, seven to zero. Item 6C, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, approval of resolutions supporting the downtown development authority, DDA, to sell approximately 47.52 acre tract, landlots 274, 303, and 304 southeast capital companies for 13 million. That will be removed from the agenda, as that LOI is not ready yet. Mrs. Wilkinson.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to remove item 6C, 2013-352, from the agenda. Should I read it as well?
You don't have to.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to remove 6C from the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, seven to zero. Item D is appointment of Ward Ford board member to Keep Smyrna Beautiful. Term expires December 2013. I'll just give that to Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My recent resignation from the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board at this point, I'd like to name Ms. Colleen McNabb as my appointee to that board. Ms. McNabb is a retired administrative manager for the U.S. Court of Appeals. She's been active in the PTA and the Smyrna community in serving as vice president and membership chairman, and been a liaison between the PTA and the Jesse Coleman Foundation. And in 2009, I believe she was a recipient of the mayor's education awards. And in her spare time, she's agreed to serve as the board of directors for the Keep Smyrna Beautiful. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Ms. Colleen McNabb.
Have motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Got a second from Melanie Pritchett. That's seven to zero. That's a two-month appointment. Is that right? Says expires 2013. My agenda says, just says appointment of Ward Ford board member to Keep Smyrna Beautiful. Term to expire December 2013.
I think there's a mistake in the date. I believe it's 2014.
Okay. Okay. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
We have three items on the agenda, on consent agenda this evening. Item A is the approval of the September 16, 2013 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is item 2013-343, authorize the mayor to sign the charter communication settlement and release agreement for an audit that was conducted by GMA for franchise fees owed from January 1, 2010 through December 31, 2002, in accordance with charter state issued cable television franchise in the amount of $2,588. And IMC is the approval to purchase six vehicles from Wade Ford under state contract for a total cost of $138,010. It's worth noting, these six vehicles are for the police department.
You hear motion to approve the consent agenda. Have motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, seven to zero. Committee reports will start tonight. Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the Smyrna Optimists Club for their annual commitment to the public safety community by the recognition they offer. Also, the Cobb Chamber of Commerce today was the Cobb Public Safety Appreciation Breakfast, and every year, there are awards given. I just want to note that Smyrna's nominee was Corporal David Nesbit of Smyrna Police Department. We appreciate what our fine public safety officials do every year, and we nominate one member of our team, as do all the other municipalities in the county and other public safety services in the county. The winner of the award this year is an EMT intermediate named Kim Burnett as the Public Safety Employee of the Year. I want to congratulate her for her heroic act in June 2012 that was outlined today. I just want to make note that every day, our public safety officials engage in heroic acts. It's just our opportunity every year to call one out and recognize it, and I want to thank both the Cobb Chamber of Commerce and others who participated in that, including some who served on a variety of committees, including our own Judge Grubbs, our fire chief, our police chief, and other members of the community who helped participate in making that event a success. And I want to thank council member Nullwich for attending this morning on behalf of Smyrna as well. Also, to let you know, the Smyrna Fire Chief Search Committee is about to start its work. We've had a national posting to allow people to be aware, there's an opportunity to come to Smyrna and lead our department. We're getting a lot of response, and so in the coming weeks, we'll hear more about it, and we'll make sure to keep you apprised as the process develops. That, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank those public safety officials every day who stand in the way to protect our families, our homes, our businesses, and our community 24/7 through 65. And since it is a month where we do express our appreciation, I invite the public to take an opportunity to find somebody in the public safety community and say thank you for the work they continue to do every day to protect us. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White Lenick.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank the folks at the Westchester Commons Homeowners Association for inviting me to their annual meeting yesterday. It's a good chance to reconnect with old friends and update them on what's going on in the city. I appreciated being invited and having the opportunity to speak with them. I'd also like to offer my personal condolences and that of my family to Keep Smyrna Beautiful board member Nell Robinson. Our families have known each other for almost 50 years. Her mother, Louise Freeman, passed away this past week. A gracious, kind, gentle lady. She will be missed in our community. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say something about the community meeting I had for Ward Five and thank everyone that came out. I had a good turnout and hope to see more the next time. Thank you. Thanks, Your Honor. I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had only one issue, just for someone's information out there, they sent me an email 10 days ago or so regarding a barking dog nuisance. And I looked at the email on my phone, and it went away. I don't know what name or a phone number or anything else, but if someone's out there listening, if you would, please resend an email. I'd be happy to get back in touch with you, but just had no way of getting in touch with you at this point. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I just ask everybody to please continue to be careful on Concord Road. We have construction going on, and we'll have some time now. Just take your time, go slow, watch out for the workers, and be careful yourself. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Taryn Nullwich.
Yes, I hope that everyone's doing well. There is, this Wednesday, it's October 9, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. here at City Hall, there's going to be an informational tree talk that has been put together by the Williams Park Homeowners Association and the Smyrna Tree Board. Anyone who is interested is invited to attend. Speaking of trees, I've gotten a couple of questions about the trees that have been removed around the arboretum. Don't worry, we didn't just indiscriminately send somebody out there with a chainsaw and tell them to have at it. Those trees were heavily damaged by termites and ants. You could see the bark was actually peeling off of the tree trunks, and in order to be replaced with healthy trees, and in order to keep all of the other trees from meeting a similar termite-infested fate, the trees had to be removed, and they will be replanted during the fall tree planting season. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to thank all the people who turned out for the Ward Two meeting. We had a nice meeting, and hopefully we'll do it again before too long. With that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thanks for reminding me.
Now, you got the sacred.
I'm old enough to know better. Mr. Eric Taylor, anything? Scott Cochran? Carrie Graham? I do want to recognize the young lady that I was talking to before the meeting, Carlin Lowmu, is that right? She's a journalism student from Georgia State University. Not much going on tonight, so. We have no show calls here, and we've got one person signed up for citizens input. Arissa Edwards, 304 Hickory Springs Drive, Smyrna City Business.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is well this evening. Before I get into what I have to say, I'd like to thank Susan Wilkinson for the ward meeting. It was very informative. You know, one of the things I learned, and I really appreciate, is that city, that Smyrna, is a disaster-prepared city. That's really important. And I learned that Smyrna is the only city partnered with FEMA in the United States, and I think that's awesome, and I think it needs to be stated. So congratulations to the leaders of Smyrna, because if it wasn't for the leaders of Smyrna, you guys wouldn't be ready. And that's one of the things that God sent me here. And I learned that Smyrna is the only city partnered with FEMA in the United States, and I think that's awesome, and I think it needs to be stated. So congratulations to the leaders of Smyrna, because if it wasn't for the leaders of Smyrna, you guys wouldn't be ready. And that's one of the things that God sent me here for, is to make sure that everyone, every city, has a preparedness plan. So congratulations, that's awesome. Also, to the residents of Smyrna, I encourage you guys to get out and get involved in the Neighborhood Watch program that the police is offering, because the police can't do it all themselves. Okay, with that being said, good to see you, Terry. I missed your last meeting. Okay, good to see you, girl. Mr. Mayor, I saw you on the news, and I'm a little concerned, because I followed the bricks up the Yellow Brick Road, and I came to the John Quill City, and I'm here in front of the Wizard of Oz. Isn't that awesome? But I saw you on the news, and it's my understanding that you made three real estate purchases without a town hall meeting. So what I'm concerned about is the property on Oakdale Road. I'm going to put this up there, just so we can have our props again, so you can understand why good people sometimes end up in the hot seat. Mr. Mayor, I'm right here. Good people end up in the hot seat sometimes, you know? And it really doesn't matter how much good you do when you make these kinds of decisions. So my question to you, Mr. Mayor, is why did the city of Smyrna purchase a piece of property outside of Smyrna? And did the residents of Smyrna have a chance to make a decision about that? Because it seems to me that your only problem is you kind of take control of the city like it's yours, and that the money that comes into the city is just yours, and you guys can make your own decisions how to spend that money, and that's... I'd like to see a town meeting, so would everybody else in Smyrna, Mr. Mayor. And with that, I yield. Peacemaker for president.
Is there any other business to be brought forth for this body? Mr. Cochran, you look like you're getting ready to say something. Don't try to suck up at this late hour. If there's no other business, I'd declare this meeting adjourned at, looks like a pretty close to 8 o'clock.